Every department head. Mr. Gagladi is here, Jayce. So we've got another Jay here. The land of the Jays and John Golden sounds like, oh, there's another Jay. So if your first name doesn't start with a J, make your middle name start with a J. That's it.
I does.
There you go. You're a hack team member, Vin.
It's a John, after both grandfathers.
Okay, let's get started because of fifteen minutes. Another Jay in Jeff Snell, who is the administrative director for the cemetery, will be joining us along with, no Jays. No, from the other communities. Unless, if me or Nehas joins, that's Jesse. So there's another Jay.
Oh geez.
Yeah, I wonder what's going on here, huh? So the first one.
I got.
The first two, about thirty-two and thirty-three. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Garvis and to Mr. Veras, the two Jays.
Hey Jeff, take it away.
What, what are you turning over to me?
Thirty-two and thirty-three. Might as well discuss both of them at once.
I think Mr. Veras is probably gonna speak on that.
Yeah, I'm like, okay, good. You caught me off guard there. I'm definitely not prepared to speak to it, but go ahead, Mr. Veras.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna clear my screen here. So.
Thank you for that.
What we're doing is.
I wonder where that idea came from.
I don't know. Some IT guy.
It's those Jays.
So, we're having trouble finding help for the service department. And one person left, so we're looking to add a hundred thousand to the appropriations for two full timers and to accomplish that, we're going to transfer in fifty thousand dollars. And then the second change is for the borrowing of the five hundred eight thousand, the rollover for the write-in, write-out, because the project's not done yet. Waiting on the monument sign. So then that money comes into the road program, gets transferred out to other debt to pay off the first year's note. And then we'll pay off the this note, the reborrowing note next year and convert it to special assessment. And the last change is adding thirty-five thousand to municipal property appropriations for the land bank fees related to the sale of the property Bedford Anodizing. And should council support the twenty-five thousand for Veterans Memorial Donation and twenty-five thousand Manor House Donation? And that's it for changes on thirty-two.
Questions?
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I had to unmute myself, but I did have a question. So the a hundred thousand dollars will then probably be applied every year for the two service workers?
Right, and we're saving.
For that line.
And we're saving about thirty thousand in part-time dollars that we just can't find anybody. Like, a lot of companies and restaurants across the nation are having trouble finding workers.
So the plan would have been to, once we did hire people, move some money in there for the part-timers. But since we didn't, we're moving in a little bit more to get a full timer.
Right, and replace the one part, or full timer, I'm sorry.
Okay. And that'll bring service up to what, right now they're fifteen, it'll bring them up to seventeen? Or it'll be from sixteen to eighteen?
I think sixteen to eighteen.
Sixteen to eighteen, correct.
Okay, cool.
I was reading Mr. H's lips.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do we have any problem, folks, with doing this one, two, three? And Mr. Garvis, you are the owner of this with Jessica, your second.
Okay.
Being the chair of the budget committee, you could assign all the budget.
I understand. Not a problem.
And if we need money, we look to your chart book as the chair.
There's not much there.
Okay, moving along into number thirty-three.
Okay, number thirty-three is our tax budget that we file every year with the county to set our millage. This year, we added back in the point, or the five point zero seven for the renewal of the general fund levy. The other two dollar amounts here, two point five three mils, and the point three for police pension are statutory. And so it, the rates are not changing from last year.
So the first two we don't have, we don't make changes, but the last one we have made a change?
No, last one, we just, I couldn't put it in last year's. I couldn't assume that it was gonna pass. So since it did pass, I put it back in this year.
Okay, explain to everyone then what happens with this if we pass it, so they understand the process.
This just, this will go down to the county then by, I think we have to have it down there by July twentieth. And then the county will gather all the information and before the year's out, they'll send us a certification and council will have to approve the certification of the millage rates for their, this is to set the property tax rates for next year's payments.
And there are no changes in what you pay today, because of the law.
Correct.
So unlike other communities that may have added, we didn't add, we did a renewal.
Correct.
So if you have a resident ask you, does this mean my taxes are going up? No.
No.
Questions on that one? Thank you. I just want to make sure not everybody is aware of what this does, so.
No, you're absolutely right.
Well, to be clear also, if people ask, their taxes can go up because of their property values went up, but it's not because the tax rate went up.
Correct.
Yep, and everyone had an opportunity to dispute their personal property tax. Some people think that with the lake that was installed behind me, they don't realize it's not a lake. Retention basin. And it's not, it's not a pool, okay? Any other questions? Hearing none, Mr. Garvis?
Yep.
You hear, we've gotta have this by July, but I don't think there's any reason to hold it. It'd be another one that we do one, two, three. Unless someone disagrees. And Mr. Finley, you are the second on that one? See, he doesn't unmute, but we can read his.
Get one on.
Yeah. Okay, the next one is thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one. I had asked everyone to take a look at the ordinance that talks about having its boats, its RVs. There is no need for this piece of legislation after discussing with the law department. It is up to the administration whether they enforce the law or not. It came to me from a couple people because they had actually filed the law, put in the concrete path, or moved the item out. So the question was, are we still enforcing the law or not? I found out from the inspector that in two thousand sixteen, under the previous mayor, enforcement was seized. So it's the, in the administrations to either enact it, follow it, waive it, it's not ours. We basically adopt and accept and adopt the legislation and the law that becomes an ordinance. It's up to the mayor, if he has enough folks, if he has the ability to do this, it's up to him to do that. So I've already explained that to two of the people that have come to me. It does take manpower. We only have Chris right now, who's been extremely busy with grass. So I'd ask that we just remove this from the agenda. There is no reason to even do it. The question was to have us come together as a group to decide if we wanted to pass any legislation amending the current, not to pass legislation says, hey, we're just not gonna do it for six months and we'll wait until six months. We have six months to do it. The other concern is someone who read this said, why would it take you six months? And I think that's an appropriate statement. We've never taken six months on anything. So first of all, if everyone's in agreement, we won't even discuss it. We'll remove it from the agenda. It's up to the mayor to decide which way he wants to go with it. We can still review it to see if there should be any adaption to it because we are responsible for, again, identifying and updating any laws that exist. Similar to Mr. Ventura's passage of the dumpster law. Hey, due to COVID, there's a lot of people doing renovations or have done them. Maybe they need them. They are more than thirty days. We put the law in place. It's up to the mayor to say, you know, due to the circumstances and the situation, we're not gonna cite people at this point in time. So that's the way it works. And thank you, Mark, for all the discussion and giving me this. In fact, with that, manpower does come into play with trying to be able to cite people for this. And then maybe there's a better way to do this. So I would ask you to, again, look at the legislation, the ordinance itself. If there are any changes that you think we could make that I, you know, not sure that there is. Right now, looking at the law, there hasn't been anything that's stuck out to me. But we can also talk about it, I would say, at the next meeting, if anyone has any ideas. You okay with that?
Can I have, can I say something, please?
Sure. Can I also remind you, sending out an email to council explaining, this is what I'm doing? You can't do that. That was what the meeting's for. You gotta be careful because at some point, someone can catch you on sunshine law.
As long as there's.
I only know that from experience.
From what I understand from the law director, as long as there's no discussion, there's no problem with me sending information for, for their, that purpose.
Yeah, you can send information. There can't be a discussion amongst a quorum of council members. That's when there's a violation.
Correct. Thank you.
Which is why we hold these meetings. And I would ask Mr. Ventura that you use the work session for what it's for.
Well.
Bring your opinions. I've asked everyone, bring your opinions here. That's where we get the give and take.
Okay.
So what else do you have to say so we could, we got two minutes before Mr. Snell?
I, I just want to make it, now that we have at least discussed my draft and gone to the law director, as long as it's perfectly understood by all that this is an administrative thing that we don't have to contend with, I will withdraw ordinance thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Make it official.
And just, just to put a finer, a finer point on it, enforcement is up to the executive branch, so to speak. As the legislative branch, you can take a look at adjusting funding, provide additional funding potentially. You can look at amending the code if you have some other ideas. You could also look at getting rid of the code totally if you felt that was appropriate. It's, it's those legislative adjustments that you have the ability to do along with the purse string, so to speak.
And that was in my draft.
Mr. Gaddetti?
Yes.
Since we, do we even have to remove this? Do I make a motion to remove it, or?
It, it would just not be presented, or you can make, you could make a motion to remove it from the agenda as well. Either way.
I just did that.
Mr. Hoover?
Yep.
We're just not even gonna, when we go to thirty-three, then we'll move to motions and other legislative action. We don't even talk about it. Ask one question, though, before we move to the others. There was discussion about accepting the money, accepting the, or authorizing us to do the money to the Memorial Day Park. Do we need a look, do we need legislation or a motion for that, Mark?
Just a motion is fine if you want.
Okay. So Jessica, that's parks.
Okay.
It was doing both the memorial park and doing the manor house.
So it would just be a motion to allow the city to make the donations? Because I can't do a motion on behalf of the veterans and the manor house? What would the motion, what would the gist of the motion be, Mark?
This is to accept, Ms. Tully, is what you're talking about?
It's where you had made the comment that the motion to approve the manor house donation.
Okay, motion to approve donation and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to each the manor house and Veterans Memorial Park?
Correct.
Can do.
Is that, is that necessary, or is it?
Oh, if you're talking, are you talking about the twenty-five that, that Mr. Veras mentioned?
Yes.
It's already in the ordinance, so you wouldn't need to do anything.
Right.
Okay, it's just you had made the comment that we need to make a motion. So never mind. I just want to make sure we don't.
I thought, I thought you were referring to a donation received by the house.
I guess in accepting thirty-two, we would be accepting this distribution.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Then I don't get any kudos for giving this money away.
Well, I didn't win the million.
Well, if you donated it, then you could.
Well, I can second, I can second it. That's the best I can do.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
It is seven sixteen. Our apologies for the minute, but it'd be time to talk cemetery.
Do we have an agenda for this? Because I didn't see one, but I can probably just wing it if we need to.
I can talk and help you, Mayor. It's just our annual budget and a review of the status of the cemetery. We do this on an annual basis because the city is the largest stakeholder in the cemetery.
So all we do is we do a roll call. Then Mr. Snell presents a status, and then he presents the budget, and all we approve is the budget. Correct, Jeff.
And allow any discussion before the, the vote, yep.
Right.
I will open up the Northfield Macedonia Cemetery Meeting, five twenty-seven twenty-one into seven seventeen PM. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Mr. Snell?
Here.
Mr. Schweickert? Mayor Nehas? Mr. Revell?
I don't know if they're gonna log in or log in on the public side.
They'll be able to speak if they're here, so it's not.
Yeah, we would see that either way.
Okay.
So they're not here.
Mr. Hoover, I think you need to also ask that I'm here, too.
And Mayor, Mayor Molnar?
Present. Sorry, formality.
No problem.
I know that when I spoke to Mr. Schweickert, he was gonna try and come in. He's never, he doesn't traditionally use Teams or any of the virtual meetings, so he's gonna try and actually dial in. So he may only be here via audio. We had not heard yet from Mayor Nehas or the others.
So Mr. Gaddetti, do we need a quorum for this, or are we okay?
I think you, I think you have one, sir.
Okay, very good. Mr. Snell, take it away.
Sure. Mr. Revell is at a meeting with Northfield Center, by the way, because I was up there probably a half hour ago. So I want to just start by thanking the cemetery trustees. Just a quick story about the cemetery. Cemetery is run by the four communities, and every year, one community rolls on and one community rolls off. It tends to have the same trustees on a regular basis. So Jan Tully from your city has been on the cemetery board throughout the last twenty-five years, which is pretty amazing. Rich Revell from Northfield Center, Jesse Nehas from Northfield Village, and Paul Schweickert, who's not on now from Sagamore Hills, but he's been traditionally on. So this is his year off. Last year, we sold twenty-nine graves, two twenty foundations, twenty-four full burials, twenty cremations at the cemetery. The accomplishments this year, we've created the northfieldmacedoniacemetary.com website. There you'll find a hundred and twenty-five years of cemetery deeds and records, forty years of minutes and records. All of them are online, digitized. We adopted a Facebook page. We hope you go there and see it. It is a mouthful, northfieldmacedoniacemetary.com. We've also, I took over at the beginning of last year after Mike died. We have looked at our costs and our budget over the last year and addressed some issues. We have one full-time employee, Dan Sackel, who I really appreciate, who's the superintendent of the cemetery and maintains all of our operations on a regular, on a daily basis. But we addressed our healthcare needs for him by joining the Summit County Plan, saving us more than eighty-six hundred dollars a year. That took us a long time to get through, but that's gonna kick in this year, which is great. We also cut the cord from Windstream and joined Spectrum, saving ourselves twelve hundred dollars a year, and we're also able to get the website. We replaced the furnace in the office. We cut down some old dangerous trees that were being held up by cables that had actually had the trees grow around the cables. We replaced a fifty-year-old tractor with a new vehicle. That's why our expenses look a little heavy last year. We had twenty-seven thousand dollars of capital improvements because we bought that new vehicle. It operates as a dump truck and a little kind of scooter, so he can use that when he's digging graves. We can also use that to care for the cemetery. We also replaced a fifteen-year-old computer that, with a lap, an iPad that he now uses. And the computer then shortly thereafter caught on fire, so it was a good move. Looking ahead, we see no increases in our budget. We have about a hundred and fifty, well, we have a hundred and fifty thousand. That's pledged to the cemetery from all of the communities. We plan to complete the refurbishment of the fence around the cemetery. We have an issue with a water line in the cemetery. The cemetery has a water line that goes through the center of it. It's not very deep. It's about twenty inches deep in a few sections. It also, we also have some areas where people can water from our main line. Well, no matter what we do, every winter, we still have a break. So we're looking at improving that by replacing that line, or at least discussing it. We're also looking at one more project that we're gonna need your help on, and that is our road is a public road. So the road within the cemetery is actually a public road. It qualifies potentially for District Eight funding. And we also have four communities that are, you know, owners of our cemetery. Normally, that process is to apply in June for the following July. You know that from the city. But that date has not yet been set this year. That's gonna fall, I think, towards the fall. The mayor might know that better. But they haven't yet set the date for that application. We anticipate the board making an application and seeking potentially some grant funding related to that improvement, and we intend to use our money as a match. But since each of our communities make a contribution to keep ourselves going, we may ask each of our communities to share because that increases our points. But we would then reduce your allocation the next year by whatever that amount of contribution is if we get the funding. We would really like to improve it because the road has a lot of bad places in it, a lot of bad patches. We were, we engaged the county engineer to look at the roadway, and for free, they can serve as our engineer to do that work because it's located in a township. We estimate that that price tag will be between eighty and ninety thousand dollars total, but we don't have that final number, but should have that soon. I just want to flag that issue so you're aware. In your materials, if you can see this, I have a chart that I provided last year, and I provided this year with the update. So in that chart, you will see all the budget expenses that we've had every year from what we expect in twenty-one to all the way back to two thousand and fifteen. Some of the highlights of the budget, and then what we see as, you know, we use last year's tax duplicate to determine the percentage of allocation to each of the communities. So your Macedonia's allocation last year was sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. This year, it will be sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Basically, a difference of a hundred dollars. You can see Sagamore Hills goes from forty-seven thousand, five fifty-six to forty-seven, forty-eight, one forty-eight. You can see the whole allocation related to the hundred and fifty. I also gave you, like I did last year, a very detailed breakdown of our expenses at the cemetery. We've tried to be very conscientious of expenses as we operate it. One last note. Last year, we talked about purchasing a piece of property at the corner of kind of across from what was Lawrence School. We eventually decided, the board eventually decided not to go forward with that purchase because the pandemic had hit at that time, and we were uncertain of our finances. So we did not go forward with the purchase of that property. We have about five to six hundred graves left in the cemetery, and certainly having the ability to have additional graves would be important as we move forward. I will open it up to any questions. Again, I appreciate Dan Sackel and all the board members, and especially Jan, because she's been there so long. She, she remade, she know, well, I shouldn't say, she knows where all the skeletons are buried, but she does know a lot about the cemetery and has been very valuable. So I often stop at her house to, you know, all the board members have to sign checks, and Jan is the one who always seems to respond so quick. So we really appreciate it. Join us on Memorial Day. There'll be a service there at eleven o'clock after the parade. But we hope the cemetery is looking perfect, but the weather, the mulch is not coming till Saturday. We're scooting around with all of that, but we try to make everything as perfect as we can. So all the endowed graves have, that's by the association, have geraniums on them. You'll see red geraniums. They all did all their work, and the grass was cut yesterday, and we're praying it's not a lot of rain, so that the grass doesn't grow too fast.
Jeff, thank you for that very thorough summary. You and I had discussed after last year's meeting about maybe just using the residential property tax value since residents are buried in cemetery.
Can't hear you. I can't hear you because you broke up.
Can anybody else hear me?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I was thanking you for your presentation, and just wondering, you and I had talked, I sent you an Excel spreadsheet last year after your presentation, wondering if maybe residential values should only be used as opposed to commercial and residential? Since the cemetery is really for residents, were there any discussions throughout the year about that?
I certainly relayed that information, but I think statutorily, the cemetery is based on the tax valuation. It will take all the participants in the cemetery to agree. One of the discussion items last year was, in particular, I think it was Mr. Ventura, raised the issue about the casino, or the Rockcino, or whatever we call it. That is not in the tax duplicate, just like anything else that's a part of a TIF. So that TIF is, you know, any of us that have, anybody who has a TIF, does not include that in it. So, you know, there may be a need for a smaller group to have that conversation about how we may look at this, but it's really the communities who would have to come together to make that decision. I'm happy to facilitate it. But it also includes like the TIF issue, because anybody who has a TIF is not in the duplicate.
All right, thank you.
Sure. So what we need at this point is an approval of the budget, which would be an alloc, an annual allocation, just like it was last year, of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then I can run through the breakdown. It's on all of these. The Macedonia breakdown would be sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Sagamore Hills would be forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-eight and thirty-eight cents. Northfield Center would be twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. And Northfield Village would be ten thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and forty cents. And Northfield Village would be $10,109.40.
If you can hear me, I'd make a motion that we pass and accept the budget as presented by Mr. Snell for the Northfield Macedonia Cemetery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Jeff, Jeff, can you send me that? I didn't, I didn't receive the email for some reason with the summer, so.
Okay, it's also on the materials on the Macedonia Council website.
It was in the packet, John.
It's on that packet, but I'll send it to you.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, Jeff, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Hoover sent it out to everybody. So we have a passage, one quick comment, Mr. Veras. We have had discussions about how to perhaps reallocate who pays what. Obviously, when you look at the numbers, there's a disparity there, but we have talked about, do we divide it up equally in four instead of based on tax? So that discussion has been ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. But it's something that legally has to be addressed, too. So Mr. Snell, make sure we put that back on the agenda again.
And just to clarify, I'm not sure it's going to be clear on the video, there is no opposition to the budget, right?
There was not. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Snell, thank you, too, because I saw you out there watering the flowers the other day yourself, so your hard work's appreciated.
I plant them, I water them, I try to make sure everything is looking good.
You do a great job, thank you.
And we would like to see as many people as possible, but the, if you've never been there, it's very heartwarming to come here for this ceremony.
Yeah, and if you can't make it, then on Friday evening at 5:00, the VFW comes up with someone to bless the flags, and all the flags are placed on all the graves of all the military people that, that day. And if you want to participate, that'd be tomorrow night at 5:00. It's a really pretty moving ceremony. It's kind of quiet, but everybody puts out all the flags at the same time. It's amazing.
Nice.
Okay, I think we had a second on the motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, and we will go right into our council meeting unless anyone objects or you need a moment. Does anyone need a moment? All right, hearing none. Hello and welcome to the May 27th council meeting. It is 7:32 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
And Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting of May 13, 2021, as well as we have made an amendment to the regular council meeting of December 10, 2020, clarifying a vote. It was not a unanimous yes, and would like to approve the amendment and the meeting minutes from that date as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. Next on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Hoover?
No public comments.
Yep. And any correspondence, sir?
Yes, we have two pieces. The first is a hard received says, Dear Heroes, exactly two weeks ago, thanks to all of you, we say to deliver our Breach Baby Fatima. God bless you always, Edward, Maria, Matilda, Tobias, and Fatima Horning Torres. And the crew attending was as follows, Lieutenant Miller, and then Fire Medics Tim Best, Matt Maloney, Ryan Zaporin, and Mike Velazquez. Then we also have an email from Resident Rose Casmer, and reads as follows. Also, are you set in stone about any future service building at the barn site? And what is the length and width needed? I would think you would like the building at the end of the park, either near the rec building or near the woods. Putting it in the middle chops up the land. I do want to point out that the national registry was because of the Longwood Estate, which consists of three buildings and adjacent land. I think tearing down the barn could negate that status. The long-term goal is to have more things on the grounds. If barns were left up, Jason could use it for the summer camp without having to worry about damage to the antiques in the manor house. Most young people in this area probably have never experienced a barn, jumping in the hay, watching baby chicks hatch, going on a wagon in the fields. Remember Macedonia was primarily a rural area until some developers made money by adding houses too soon without considering things like stormwater control. I do not intentionally slight anyone by not including them on the to list or intend to offend anyone. I just think a compromise is possible.
Thank you. All right, we will move into pending our new legislation. First up is ordinance number 32.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 32, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance 74-2020 relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Macedonia for the period of January 1, 2021 to December 31, 2021.
Director Veras?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen now to assist in explaining the changes. A few, there are three major changes. Transfer into the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund has been increased by 50,000. That is to assist in the hiring of two full-time employees. We just lost a regular full-time employee, and we're finding it very hard to find any part-timers, which are usually budget about $30,000 for. So that's the first request for an amendment. The second has to do with the Right-In, Right-Out Project. It has been a year since we borrowed money for it. The road, Right-In, Right-Out is done, but we're waiting on the monument sign to be bid out and complete. The first bid had to be rejected, so we're reborrowing 580,000, transferring it out to the Debt Service Fund to make that payment on the note from last year of principal and interest. And the last change is the Municipal Property Fund. We were able to successfully, and thanks to our law director and mayor and all involved, sell some property that has been an eyesore in the city for a long time. Luckily, it's in an area where not many people see it. So there is 35,000 in the land bank fee expenses, and the mayor would like to donate 25,000 to the Veterans Memorial through this fund and 25,000 to the Manor House.
So a couple brief corrections. The Service Department currently operates with 16 employees. You, I know Jan and potentially one other of you were here during the time when we had a long, detailed discussion about where we stood in that department. Through our analysis, we realized that we generally would use seasonals and part-timers. Given the state of the union right now, it's very difficult to find those folks, so it's definitely having a profound impact on our operation and our ability to do the different things that we do day to day. The thought is to add two full-time employees, which we will remove the money from part-time and seasonal status and use it for that at this point. We desperately need it. I can tell you that cutting grass alone right now is a major, major issue for us, and it absorbs a majority of the time of the staff. The thinking with this, too, is we allow two people off per day in the department. This will shell up that one thing and put us back to a point where we feel that we can operate and obviously go back at some point and analyze where we stand in the near future. As for the land bank piece, we're referring to the Bedford Anodizing property. I had a Post-it note that I put a big star on, and I'm sure it's very difficult to see, but on September 18, 2018, I received a phone call about this property. Mrs. Tully and I, I know we were on council when this topic came up many years ago when they talked about wanting to put a professional soccer stadium there and a whole lot of different things and a whole lot of conjecture. It's finally come into fruition. From September 18, 2018, to May 21, 2021, is how long I've been working on that. Ironically, it was completed on my birthday, which I thought was a little odd, but, you know, somewhat fortuitous. But I'm going to, I'm going to kind of read the press release that's going to come out tomorrow, so you're going to get a little preview of what this is all about. I am thrilled to announce the city is the recipient of nearly $1.5 million in funds as a result of a cooperative effort between the city, the Summit County Land Bank, and fiscal office, as well as state and federal regulatory agencies concerning the property formerly known as Bedford Anodizing. The city began working on this project nearly a decade ago after an incident at the site resulted in a significant environmental contamination of the property, which necessitated intervention by the United States EPA, among others. After years of working to rejuvenate the property so that may be repurposed, the city, along with Summit County and the Summit County Land Bank, were able to coordinate with a national development committee to bring immediate and much-needed funds to Macedonia. More importantly, this coordination sets the groundwork for redevelopment of the property, which will in turn generate tax dollars for the school district, the county, as well as the city, and provide additional economic stability in the region. Moving forward, the city will work, as will the school district, to consider potential economic incentives to maximize development potential on the property. The city will be looking to utilize funds received towards much-needed municipal infrastructure improvements. So that's kind of the gist of what that was all about. And again, I want to thank Director Godetti, Director Gelati, for all your hard work in this, because I can tell you, we've put a lot of hours into getting this, this deal done, and it's a great win for the city. If you're wondering about the $25,000 donations, we've always talked about not giving money from our coffers, you know, for those types of projects. With this one, it's a windfall for the city. So in my mind, you know, I want to give these dollars to the Veterans Memorial Committee and the Longwood Manor House Society, because they have never had a shot in the arm like this, and I think it's a nice way for us to give them a hand in completing their project. So that's kind of the thinking that we have surrounding that, and it's a windfall for the city. And even greater than that in the future, that property really is for industrial type things. I know a lot of people say, hey, keep the green space. The problem is, a lot of that back there is wetlands, and I can tell you, we've had many, many conversations that are going to be working around the wetlands to utilize the little bit that's left to have companies come in there and potentially have tax dollars generated to the city and everyone else. So I think it's a big win for us. Is there any other discussion surrounding that?
Mayor, you're welcome for my involvement as well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Veras, I skipped you, but thank you as well, sir.
Okay.
I had a lot on my mind. I had to get it out, so I skipped you. I apologize. All right, is there any questions on that?
Apology accepted.
If not, what is your pleasure?
I move to pass and post according to law, ordinance 32, 2021.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
No.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Ordinance number 32 carries. Resolution number 33.
Mayor, I make a motion to, as I'm changing pages, to offer resolution 33, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
A resolution adopting alternate tax budget information for the City of Macedonia, Ohio for fiscal year 2022, and submitting the same to Summit County.
Mr. Veras?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen again. So what, what the tax budget does on an annual basis is, we as a community send in what our millage rate is, and then what we think it is actually. This is statutory for the general fund, 2.53 mils. Point 30 for police pension is statutory as well, set by the state. And then our operating levy that was renewed on November 3 of last year, I put back into the tax budget, because last year I couldn't, could not assume that was going to pass in November, and that millage is 5.07. And you see the dollar amounts that are estimated to be generated from each of those three millage rates.
Any discussion?
Is it fair to say this is just a housekeeping measure? We're just informing them of things that, okay, thank you.
Yeah. 25 years ago, it was more than a housekeeping measure. You were able to play around with numbers and, and try and get millage. That really wasn't yours, but they've cleaned that up here.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, resolution 33, 2021.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
No.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Resolution 33 carries. Do we have any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll go into the mayor's report. I'm going to start today with a proclamation. This one is for prostate cancer. Whereas this year, approximately 191,930 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone, and roughly 33,330 will die this year from the disease. And whereas in Ohio, an estimated 9,010 new cases of prostate cancer will be diagnosed, and an estimated 2,000 deaths will occur in 2021. And whereas men with relatives, father, brother, son, with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease, and whereas men who served in the military who have been exposed to chemicals, herbicides, are at higher risk for developing prostate cancer. And whereas prostate cancer is the most diagnosed cancer in American men and the second leading cause of cancer death beyond only lung cancer. And whereas one in nine men are diagnosed with prostate cancer in his lifetime, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease with a rate of one in six and 2.2 times more likely to die from the disease. And whereas nearly 3.1 million men in the U.S. are living with prostate cancer diagnosis, that number is estimated to climb to 4 million by 2024 as men in the baby boomer, boomer generation age. Now therefore, all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of the City of Macedonia to increase the importance of prostate screenings. Very important topic. Next on my list is PostNet will be our business of the month, so always want to recognize our folks that have businesses in our community. Our restaurants of the week were Applebee's and Culvers. On June 14 through the 18th, we'll have Safety Town. If you're looking to sign up your child for Safety Town, you can go to nordoniahillsrotary.org to do that. I had mentioned in our last meeting about concrete slabs and coming up with a plan to try and get something to have them done for a reduced rate. We are still working on that. I can tell you that Mr. Rodick has put a lot of time and effort into that and done a great assessment of it, which I'll probably do a presentation in our next meeting to talk about where we're going to head in the future for that. So there's more to come on that. If you're looking for our free mulch, we are not doing it at City Hall this year. Again, with us being a little short staff, we used to haul it up there, so it was a little bit more convenient for folks. We haven't had the ability to do that. So it's at 9,000 Valley Road. Please come and get it. We have had a lot. I think with the pandemic and people being home, we did a lot more cleanup than we normally do, and we have a lot of mulch ready for you, so come and get it. Come and get it in droves. Also want to mention grass clippings. When you're cutting your lawn and you blow the grass into a curb or anywhere where there's a gutter or a stormwater inlet, that does clog up. You know, this is the time of year when it's the most severe for us. If that stuff clogs up in the stormwater inlet or in any gutter down there, we're going to have flooding, which can potentially impact your house. Please, I beg you to blow that grass back into your lawn, sweep it up, do whatever you have to do, but help the problem so it doesn't affect yourself or your neighbors or cause flood, and it's unnecessary. So please take care of that. I also want to mention to everyone a happy Memorial Day. It's coming up here very soon. Even though the weather doesn't look like it's going to be the greatest, I hope that you all make the most of it. I want to touch on the Bedford Anodizing, which I talked about in ordinance number 32. So with the dollars that we are getting from that, it's my intention to start working on the construction of a new building for our Service Department. You may remember back to the meeting a little time back where I kind of showed you the dilapidated state of the current buildings we operate out of. And again, we're working out of four or five different buildings currently that none of them are really in the best of shape, so it's definitely time, and none of those buildings were purposed for that. So we're going to continue to work at that. So my plan moving forward is to take the 1.4 million and plus the 2.35 that we're getting from the federal government and putting that towards the project. And as we have previously discussed, there is a significant and immediate need to construct the building from which our service departments operate. Given the poor state in which the current buildings are in, we need to take action. As a result, in upcoming meetings, I will be requesting that council pass legislation to assist in achieving that goal. While there are several processes for constructing a new building, we are currently looking to currently looking to utilize a design build process, which will first involve selecting an architect or engineer to assist the planning stage of the project. I will continue to keep council informed as to our planning and encourage anyone with questions to please contact me directly because there's going to be a lot going on with this and it's going to come fast, but we are literally on step two of a hundred and fifty. So we're going to start plugging away at this, but it's a hot topic on my plate that I plan to continue working on. Next up is with everything changing and the world opening back up, thank God, the building for City Hall will open back up in July. We're giving ourselves the month of June to get prepared for that. There's a lot of things that we need to button up with the time that we've been off. And I think it's just appropriate to give us that time to get things in order. And I ask everyone to be patient with us as we continue to do that. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted and put down the phones. Okay, we'll go right into committee reports.
Parks and Rec Committee had our meeting last week. We talked about what to expect at the upcoming festival. Also, some of the good stuff that's been going on inside the rec center building, including the new lighting and the plans for replacing what equipment still needs to be replaced. We also talked about the finishing up of the ball fields, which has been great. Got a lot of good feedback and everyone's very excited about that. We are still wondering about the state of getting some netting put up above those ball fields. I know Mr. Nadevanch has been working on that, so he might have to bring that to council. It's more expensive than you would think to get netting that can keep a baseball out of people's heads. So that should be coming up. But I am, as far as I know, everyone in the group is very much for that. We want to keep everyone safe, especially if we're going to be having big crowds in our beautiful ball fields. Our next meeting, our June meeting was to be canceled. Our yearly June meeting, we've decided in advance we weren't going to have. We have many members that can't be at the July meeting, so we decided to have a June meeting. And then we have members that couldn't be at the June sixteenth meeting. So now we are hoping to have the meeting on June ninth. We are still locking down that date, but keep an eye on the the meetings portal, a section of our website for that date and link for that team's meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, hearing none, I'll go into department reports. First up is Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Parks and Recreation standpoint, that we have quite a few things going on as we approach summer. The first thing I wanted to highlight is staff is working right now on having a food truck Friday. Each and every Friday during the course of summer, please check back to our website and our social media on a regular basis because every once in a while, there is a Friday that we won't have filled due to other events and activities. This Friday upcoming, four to eight P.M. on the Longwood Ball Field Parking Lot, we'll have Pink Piggy out there serving barbecue. So it should be a good time for everybody, along with checking out some T-ball. It'll be a good activity. See a lot of little kids running around, playing some T-ball, parents chasing the little kids, making sure they go base to base. It's a great time out there. I encourage you all to check it out. Other recreation activities upcoming, June fourth and fifth, we have Summer Fest, the Spirit of Macedonia. We will be hosting the two day carnival and other festivities. I encourage everyone to get out. A couple of the bigger activities going on, we will be hosting the five K, which will be presented by Kristen Bissler of Remax Traditions. She is a sponsor for that. And we will also have a fireworks show. And I'm really proud to announce our sponsor for the fireworks show is Raising Cane's. So new business into town and they're going to sponsor the fireworks show for us. Exciting times for us to get them involved with the community. And Summer Fest, again, will be going on for two days in the Mack Rec Parking Lot. Definitely encourage everyone to get out. And registration for the five K is currently open. Please get out, enjoy a five K or one mile run and experience Longwood Park and all of its beauty during the course of that morning before it gets hot. And we have pre-sale tickets available currently for all day passes. It'll be fifteen dollars for an all day pass for the rides. Those went on sale today. And if you show up the day of the event, they will be twenty dollars on sale. We have a number of other things going on. I just want to take this moment to thank our parks crew who is outside constantly, along with some of the service crew that have been doing all the ball field work. Our ball fields are jam packed. Each and every day, including tournaments on the weekends, our crews are working seven days a week to keep these fields maintained. And each and every single week, we get at least one to three emails plus additional phone calls just commending us on what a great job the staff is doing on those fields, keeping them going. So absolute props to Mr. Nadevanch and crew, Jason Kuzma, Chuck Belonda, and a number of the other guys that are out there doing that. It's been a huge resource for our city to have these guys keeping the fields going. And we have an exciting summer coming up. I encourage each and every person that wants to get involved, whether it's swim lessons or our summer camp, please sign up now. We are almost full in all of these areas. If you end up with a class that is full, please sign up for the waitlist because we do get substitutions that go on regularly. And the one thing I also want to throw out there, we have our two positions posted right now that council had approved at the last session. We have a recreation coordinator position of marketing and special events. And we also have recreation supervisor position of facilities and membership. Both of those positions currently posted. You can find them on our website. And then the last piece I'll leave you guys with is just a kudos to the recreation staff for all the work and programming that they're doing. January is typically the biggest month of revenue in the Parks and Rec field because that's when everybody renews or purchases their memberships for the gym. And I can tell you, the month of January is the only time we've ever passed a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And I can tell you, for the month of May, twenty twenty one, we are going to pass a hundred thousand dollars in revenue this this weekend. So very excited for what staff has put together programming wise. And this is with a lack of memberships currently. So it's been very exciting. This is pretty much program based. Kudos to the rec staff for all the work they're putting into keeping things going. That concludes my very long-winded report today.
Well, thank you for you and your staff and all your hard work. That's great news to hear that we're trending towards the good with our revenues there. And also I noticed that Pink Piggy has a brisket sandwich that sounds very enticing that I have to make. I might have to make my way up there tomorrow. So thanks for that.
I have a question for Mr. Chaddick.
Yes, sir.
Will the protocol for your building change along with City Hall for July?
That's a great question. We have a lot of different things that are going on right now. And we are currently waiting on the state to produce the next piece of material that will take us after June second. I can tell you that right now, the the slow incremental change we're doing is adding a couple additional spots to some classes that we are able to space out appropriately. And then the other thing is if you are fully vaccinated, meaning fourteen days post your second dose on a two dose vaccine or fourteen days past your dose on a singular dose of vaccine, we're looking at that is considered fully vaccinated and you do not have to wear a mask into the facility. That's the only formal change that's going on at this time.
Okay, so we're still not opening up the locker room or a number of people that can be in the pool or the jacuzzi at one time.
We're slowly increasing those numbers. We have not gone back to full capacity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Director Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. I've closed twenty eight health desk tickets in the last two weeks, making great progress on the new website project. I've viewed countless demos, gotten four very promising quotes. Made some good progress on the security camera project and upgrading connectivity between the remote buildings back to the city. I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the finance department for their work with the new software suite that was rolled out live this Monday. I'm sure it's been challenging for them, but in the long run, this is going to be an amazing tool for everybody and for the city. I also would like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Director Gelati.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Road program paving work started on Monday along Red Bush, Adderbury, and Iroquois roads. All the residents on those roads can see the progress that's been made so far to date. All looks good. Remember that beginning on June eighth, Iroquois Run will become restricted to one-way traffic. That's northbound only. That restriction is will only be in place between Shepherd Hills Boulevard and Shoshone. We expect that restriction to be in place for a period of six weeks, beginning on June eighth. And as usual, we will be providing another alert notification to all of the affected residents in that area. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. The police department has been working with civil service to get a new police eligibility list. We have yet to fill the vacancy for the position that the residents approved back. I don't know how long has it been? A few years now we're trying to fill that position. And Patrolman Glenn Nichol will be retiring in June. So we're looking to fill several spots. We're also looking to fill a part-time SRO position, School Resource Officer. So if anybody knows of with qualifications for that, come in and fill out an application or you can find a application online. And we're working to finalize the eight hundred megahertz radios, which I'm sure Chief Ripley will touch on. Sergeant Glance has been working with Evan Ty to get the recorders. The device that records all the lines coming into the police department, radios, phones, et cetera. And we lost a few lines for whatever reason, so we're trying to get that finalized. That's all I have, Mayor.
And thanks, Chief, for all the police department's help with the parade for the graduating seniors. We do congratulate all them. And I know we put a lot of effort into that. So I think Lieutenant Yakapowicz did a lot of work with that as well. So please make sure you send that along to them.
And Sergeant Quill.
Yes, thank you. All right, Director Nadevanch?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the passage of ordinance thirty two. As the mayor explained to you all, with the need of additional personnel, this is definitely going to be a huge help to this department. So thank you again for the passage. In observance of Earth Day and for the cleanup, the city put out dumpsters between the dates of April nineteenth to May second. I was not able to get the numbers in time for our last council meeting, but wanted to state that there was a collection of just under fifteen and a half tons that were collected in the forty yard dumpsters that we had there. Normally, we only had two dumpsters. This year, we had four. Like, thank everyone who did participate in that by getting rid of their clutter in their house because they kept everything in the dumpsters. We did not have to clean up anything at all in the parking lot. So that was greatly appreciated. I'm happy that we were able to provide that this year. With our ball fields at Longwood Park, Director Chaddick, as you said, you know, the guys have done a great job out there. You know what? We can't do it without Director Chaddick and his staff too because they are in constant communication at all times with scheduling of these fields. And it's been a great benefit having him with us. He's really learning the ropes and showing us a few things also. So we're doing really good with that. Very happy with the way the fields have turned out. And I'm happy to report as of today on Field B, both bleachers are now up and ready to be used on concrete pads with concrete walkways leading to them finally complete. So we'll be moving, looking to move into the other fields as well to do the same thing, but happy to see that that's done and just in time for the tournament this upcoming weekend. And lastly, just want to make note that save the date for your paper shredding event coming to Macedonia at Longwood Park. It will be July tenth from nine A.M. to noon. So start to gather your papers you want to get out of there and we'll be reminding you again at the next council meeting. But again, July tenth from nine to noon at Longwood Park. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Good evening, everyone. Monday's Memorial Day Parade. We are very close to having our nineteen thirty one seagrave in that parade. I sent a video to the mayor on Wednesday of it driving around the building. There's still some issues Lieutenant Davis is working on. That was his goal prior to his retirement at the end of June to have that in that parade. He and his son have been working long hours on the vehicle with the help of firefighter Natali. If you can only imagine working on a ninety year old fire truck. Parts are difficult. They actually, Lieutenant Davis and firefighter Natali replaced the tires on that vehicle by themselves in our shop without a tire shop. So kudos to them. And also on that parade, if the truck is in the parade, we're going to have some of our retirees with twenty years plus service to help us celebrate our hundredth anniversary. So we're very much looking forward to that. The radios are going well, as Chief Golden stated, working through some bugs. The biggest thing that's happened in the last two weeks is all the mobiles that came out of vehicles around the city, staff vehicles in police and fire are have all been installed in the service vehicles. And we forwarded to them and they just received today portable radios, so they'll have better communication. So this project has improved public safety from every avenue in a snowstorm to a police or fire emergency, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. The other thing is I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend. Veterans Memorial Park, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to have lunch there with my granddaughters from Virginia. Very, very nice park and I was surprised at how much activity. So kudos to the group that's done the park. It's a wonderful gem in our city. Everyone have a nice weekend. End of report, sir.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm playing catch up over this week. It's been pretty busy after being off for two weeks. Lot of activity helping police in the rec center and service for the job positions that were open and trying to fill. So we've been busy with that and getting interviews set up. Working with, meeting with Fideli to do a quarterly update on our MMO plan to see how the plan is running, if it is running above average, below average, going to help us to know how we're tracking for the end of the year in renewals, which will be, we'll start looking at that again in October. We're also changing our workers' comp MMO, or I'm sorry, MCO this July. So working with the carrier to get all that in place and notify our employees. Also, meeting with our wellness provider in June to look at improving our wellness program for twenty twenty two. And that is the balance of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Director Varys.
Thank you, Mayor. As Kyle mentioned, finance has been going through the conversion to the new software. Ran into a little glitch the past day or two, ended up being something very very humorous, Kyle, right, as to why it happened. And so we're past that, thank goodness, and looking forward to how powerful this tool is and will be a great step in creating additional efficiencies in the procurement and financial reporting process. End of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Godetti.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really have to thank you as well as former mayors Miglerini and Cookta for having the foresight to really stick with that Bedford Anodizing project. It was truly a situation of taking lemons and turning it into lemonade. The city's actually been working on that project since the initial environmental minor disaster, I guess you could call it. Back in March two thousand eleven, the city became involved in two thousand twelve. So it's actually been about a decade worth of work and initially about six yards of waste was removed for the site. But to give you an idea of how bad the environmental situation was, the EPA ended up taking out sixty four truckloads, which is about fourteen hundred tons of soil, contaminated soil. So not only is it a benefit financially for the city and the community, but also benefited the environment. So thank you very much. And other than that, just wish everybody And other than that, just wish everybody a happy Memorial Day.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, any new business?
I just want to say congratulations to the class of two thousand-and-twenty-one. You guys, half of your time in high school was the craziest time in anyone's recent memory, and I can't believe you all did it. I'm so proud of everyone. I'm so proud of all the teachers that have made it through these last two years, and I hope that you guys all go on to great and wonderful things, and I know you all can do it. So I just want to say congratulations to them.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Hold on, we need an executive session, please.
Okay.
Can you rescind that?
I rescind my motion for adjournment. Didn't know that was coming.
Mark, can you help?
Mayor, I think you're looking for a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Vice Code one-twenty-one-two-two-G-one to discuss the employment of a public employer official.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. I should have, while I said it, but thank you, Mark.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to ask that Mr. Guddey join us, Mr. Nadevanch, and Mrs. Smith, and Mr. Collins. You said you have a way to make this happen that we don't have to log out, so
Yes, sir.
Going to trust in you helping us to do that, ask for anyone else viewing the meeting. We're going to go into executive session. When we come out of there, we will be adjourning. Will not be anything else that I'm aware of that will be discussing, so that will be the end of our meeting likely. So, Mr. Collins, it's all yours, sir.
All right. I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, we're adjourned. Have a nice evening, guys.
Enjoy the weekend, everybody.
Good night. Take care. Happy Memorial Day.